Okay, John?
Yeah, just if you could, Mr. Hardy?
Yeah.
Would you be a bit more specific as to what it is you're now with respect to?
Sure, I'd like to bring more awareness to the development of Kelly's Corner where the Acton Kmart parcel is. It's now going on sale for, I mean, Kmart's going out of business sometime in February or March or whenever it decides to close shop, and then it will be put on sale, correct?
Yeah, the Stop &amp; Shop which owns the parcel has listed it for sale last June.
Correct.
And we've, if I'm correct, we received the planning, received a number of inquiries from prospective buyers.
And where is that?
Nothing has panned out. John, are there any further developments that you could bring us current on with respect to the parcel?
No, we are not aware of any. So we do check in on that regularly, see if anything's changed.
Thank you. So, the petition that was presented last year, what exactly happened because I wasn't here or even aware of that petition to be issued?
It was Article 38, it was a non-binding citizen petition for the town, for the Select Board to come back a year hence for the 2020 town meeting with a plan to buy the parcel. That petition went down approximately 100 votes against the petition, 50 votes for the petition.
Oh my, sorry. You had 150 people from the town of Acton who were over maybe 20,000 people, 150 voted, and that's representation of the town, what we want going forward? Does that really do justice? Does that do process?
The regrettable issue there is that article was not held over to a third day or moved up earlier in the evening when you would have had more people there. But, you know, to give you an idea, you're not going to have several thousand people coming out.
All right, that's, you can't say never.
Well, I think I can say never.
Okay, that's understandable, but I don't agree with that.
To give you a measure, for the earlier Kelly's Corner article on the first night, Article 5, that was for supplemental infrastructure funding, there were a little, there was about 526 people who voted on that article.
What's supplemental infrastructure voting?
Those were additional funds we needed for supplemental engineering and design funding.
So that was already allotted?
For the project, and that passed, that passed with about 89% of the vote.
Let's not get into too much of a dialogue here in this session.
That's fine, I'll add a quick question as a roundout. What do I need to do to come back to the next meeting before the beginning of March? What do I need to do to have a petition and make it solid for a vote to happen within this meeting, at the next meeting, and when is that meeting?
The warrant was closed, isn't it, John?
The what?
The warrant for town meeting.
Yeah, at the last meeting, or in the early January meeting, the board took a vote to close the warrant on the close of business on January 27th, which was at 5:00 today.
Wait, what do you mean by close the warrant? The one that the petition came reopening? Can I create a note?
I'm happy to give you my card and talk with you about all the options available to.
That's fine, that'd be great, I'm actually working from home, I have some free time, if you have the time.
Why don't you talk off line?
Thank you.
Yeah, I would be happy to talk to you as well about Kelly's Corner, you know, planning and to, you know, catch up to speed and make sure you're clear on, you know, what it is, where we are in Kelly's Corner.
Then, just the last thing, is it possible to recreate a new petition and get the voice out there again?
You can discuss that off.
Yeah.
Okay, Jim Snyder Grant, West Acton. When we get to the consent agenda, I'd love to make a comment on Item 28. Thanks. Let's talk about the mosquito control work.
Taylor Fredericks, West Acton. Just a note on the Kmart, the town meeting improvement committee was formed after a lot of people complained about not being able to participate in Article 38, I'll tell them that if he calls me. I just would like, from the chair, I would like to know if we'll be able to speak on the whistle ban and quiet zone presentation, will we be able to speak then?
Yes.
Will we be able to speak regarding the powder mill place?
Yes.
Will we be able to speak on sewer regulations and bylaws updates to privilege fees?
Yes.
And the citizen petition process? Will you be able to speak? Okay, and my last comment is, I've heard, people have said that they've heard me talk about the lack of planning in Acton, and I'm going to revise that, and I want to say, I feel like there's plenty of planning when it comes to developers and infrastructure for developers and creating construction, et cetera, but there's, at least from my view, not a lot of planning in terms of the increasing amount of land that's preserved, considering that we lose probably 50 acres a year, and we preserve on average one or two acres a year, so, thank you.
Are there any other citizens' concerns?
Yes, one more. The housing production plan that's coming up, they've changed the format, and so I may not have the opportunity to speak to the whole group, and I just want to say that I hope that we distinguish between subsidizing with our water, road capacity, environmental resources, market demand for capitalism, market demand as in want, as opposed to public necessity, something that's truly needed by folks that are extremely low-income and disabled, and that we satisfy those needs with all the building, as opposed to trying to help developers meet a market demand. Thank you.
John? Sorry. No, no.
Is this on? Yes. My name's Emily Teller, and I live in Westford, Massachusetts, and so I'm not really an Acton citizen, but I'm coming to you tonight to ask if the Board of Selectmen would please write a note of support to the Sudbury Select Board. They are having a meeting, unfortunately it's tomorrow night, but we can talk about that, to approve or to vote, take a vote on whether an article should be on their May town meeting that would fund the purchase by the town of at least a quarter mile and hopefully the entire right-of-way of CSX in Sudbury. The citizens of Sudbury have supported the rail trail every time it's gone to a ballot or to a town meeting overwhelmingly, and we're just hoping that the board will also bring this warrant article to the town meeting. They already have $100,000 from the recreational trail grants program toward the purchase, but that expires in December of 2020, and if they don't spend the money by then, it will be gone. They've also applied for a $300,000 grant from another agency, and that would reimburse the town for the purchase price. But basically, we just would, and my, the Chair of the Westford Board of Selectmen/Select Board got in touch with me today and asked if it would be okay if they wrote a letter of support, and she came up with the idea of having the other towns where the Bruce Freeman rail trail goes through to also write a letter to your colleagues in Sudbury. So I have a copy of the letter that she wrote, I can send this electronically to John tomorrow, or later tonight, so he'll have it tomorrow, and it's very basic, just asking you to please put this warrant article on the town meeting. As you know, the Bruce Freeman rail trail starts in Lowell and now goes to Route 2 Rotary. That bridge, which will be flying over the Route 2 Rotary, will be started construction this spring and will finish in 2021, and the next section of three miles was completed in West Concord. Concord is waiting for Sudbury to get their design moving in order for Concord's portion of the last few feet to go to the Sudbury line, and the Sudbury 25% design has been submitted to Mass DOT, the comments we are waiting for, and then they'll have a public hearing, and then they'll have to go to 75% design. But all the towns that have the Bruce Freeman rail trail obviously know how fabulous it is, and it would be wonderful if you could do colleague-to-colleague a letter just asking them to move ahead with this as soon as possible, so that the funding which can be encumbered for that and has been will be spent on it. I can answer questions if you want, I have some newsletters for you, as you know, Middlesex Savings Bank honored us with the cover of their calendar this year. And John was in Westford, Manjirati, was in Westford when the rail trail was under construction and also finished there, so he's very familiar with the Bruce Freeman rail trail, as I hope some of you are.
Yes, do you have a question?
Just quickly, we've used community preservation funds to build our portion of Bruce Freeman, I don't know what's happening in Sudbury, I assume they're a member, they've adopted the CPC, so, you're talking about the Selectmen putting, using free cash or whatever to purchase this right away as opposed to CPC money?
They have used CPC funding, but typically, the CPC money pays for the design, and the uniqueness about Sudbury and Framingham is that the CSX railroad is the owner of the right-of-way. Up here, Mass DOT was, and so it didn't have to be purchased, and CSX has been negotiating, and they're in closed-door negotiations now with the Board of Selectmen and the town planner working out the negotiations, but they have, they have free cash, and they've already put $650,000 aside for free cash for the 75% design. But the state basically pays for 90% of it, and CPA money really only goes for the design. The problem is Framingham has no CPA, they've never voted that in, so they'll be the trickiest segment to fund, but in fact, this isn't CPA money that we're asking for, they've already spent that, and it's for the design, but that's a great question.
Okay.
So this is basically asking you to support your colleagues in putting this warrant article on the agenda, and they're taking the vote tomorrow night. I'm very sorry, this is so late, I just found out about my Select Board member writing the letter today. I can leave a hard copy here, I can send it to you all at, do you have, you have a joint BOS at actonma.gov, correct? I can send that tonight to a copy of her letter, you don't have to send the exact copy, but it basically would give you a draft to work from, so if you could scoot it over to them by tomorrow, that would be great.
Thank you.
I'm happy to.
We'll put this on to discuss later. Any other citizens' concerns?
Has there been a study or survey, I believe there was, about how to get better voter participation at these town meetings?
Yes, John?
Yeah. I'm not aware of this, so I'm new to all this. 44 years old, I want to be active, and now is...
I think, I think that's great, if you would just leave me your email address, I'll be back to you late this evening and we can get together.
Okay.
Catch you up on some, a number of things.
And then one quick thing around that, would there be an organization, I'm not a Rotary, but would they provide help sponsoring daycare in the library if it's open?
Let me catch you up on all of that, just leave me your piece of contact information, and I'll be back to you. Late tonight.
Anyone else? All right, John, update?
Yes, thank you. There, this week, on the 30th, there will be a Planning for Housing in Acton Public Forum, it will be held in this room, starting at 7:00 PM. We have a snow date scheduled, hopefully we won't need it, I encourage you to attend and provide your input and listen to the presentation, there's a flyer going around if you'd like to see more details. I also wanted to mention that we've published a survey, just a very brief four-question survey, it takes about 45 seconds unless you want to be very detailed, simply asking you what you love about Acton. It's part of a project that we're working on, we mentioned at the last meeting or two, to try to produce a few short videos to help with economic development and community engagement efforts, and we'd love to hear your input. Go right to actonma.gov to fill that out, and it's only, it'll only take you a minute. There was a public hearing that was initially scheduled for tonight for site plan special permit for Post Office Square parking lot, that has been continued to February 24, so if you're here for that, just want to make sure you're aware of that, it will not be discussed tonight. Also, there was a request from the Acton Boxboro Farmers Market to consider taking Item 8 earlier, if the board's so inclined.
Okay. Is there someone here for the train whistle? Yep. Are you under the Farmers Market before that? Because this is first. All right, we'll do the Farmers Market after this presentation.
Good evening, my name's Cory York, I'm the DPW Director. I'm just going to give a quick, sort of preview for our consultant in regards to the train whistle ban, just giving you what, sort of the general timeline within Acton. I know over the years, sort of predating when I got involved, the FRA, the Federal Railroad Administration, had some final rules that govern it, I believe they did a final rule in the mid-'90s, is about when the town sort of retained its quiet, pre-rule quiet zone. In about 2003, they did an update, and that's about when I got involved, and we did a, another application to recertify that we could maintain our quiet rule, train whistle ban, so that, sort of, within the town limits of the different crossings that we have, that they wouldn't blow whistle as long as we maintained the criteria. And then, once we certified that we were qualified for that, about every three years, we had to recertify. So up in about, I think around 2012 is when the double tracking, and they did improvements to the West Acton Center, and I think around 2014, there was an accident in West Acton that prompted our, sort of our calculation to go askew. So we've been looking at those numbers, and it put us in a situation where our numbers didn't retain our whistle ban, so at that point, we looked out for expertise, and that failed, and we contracted with Dewberry, Adam, he's been our person that we kind of went to to kind of pay review our existing conditions and give us an assessment of, so what he saw and what we saw to kind of get to terms with where we are and what we need to do to try to retain our whistle ban before we lost it. I'll bring up his presentation, so he can go through that, but he can start while I'm looking for that.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. As Cory mentioned, my name's Adam Zisk, I'm with Dewberry Engineers out of Boston, and I have a fairly short PowerPoint, and kind of give you a little background, a little more background on the rule, and then we'll look at what's specific to your town and your quiet zone. Which one? Okay, cool. All right. So, your train, your tracks are part of the Fitchburg Line, running from, of course, Fitchburg into North Station in Boston, and that's what, that's what we're looking at, and we have to work with the MBTA to get this all to happen. So, why did the train horn sound in the first place? As you would expect, it's all about safety. They, the FRA doesn't want the train running into people and getting stuck on the tracks, cars, people, animals, you name it, and they've established a bunch of regulations about what decibel level the train has to be at, and when it has to sound as it approaches the crossing, and depending on speed, that varies from 15 seconds, quarter mile, faster trains will sound farther, farther out, because they cover that distance in much faster time. All right, so, quiet zone that exists is an exception to the rule that requires the train to blow their horn at every single crossing, rail grade crossing that it comes across. Quiet zone consists of a section of rail line, as it says, about at least a half a mile, and it's interesting, we looked at a situation in Rockport a couple of years ago, and they didn't have a half a mile of railroad in their town, they wanted to establish the quiet zone, so they couldn't. But, this half a mile that has one or more grade crossings where the horns are not routinely sounded. Now, there may be private crossings in the quiet zone, I've seen that in one location in Massachusetts, but generally in this part of the country, that's not too common, it's more, much more common out west. So, before all these regulations were put into place, some of the local jurisdictions, states, counties, had some, had some say in where the trains could blow their horns and where they couldn't, it was a little bit more loose back then, and this was probably up until the '70s and the '80s. They started seeing an uptick in accidents at rail grade crossings across the nation in the '80s, so they did a bunch of studies, and they, as early as the late '90s, they started introducing regulations into the federal register. And then in 2000, they really, they really set out a lot of more detail defining what they, what they defined as a quiet zone, and then they started introducing ways to establish one or to create one. And then, following some discussion and some additional studies and comments from a bunch of different organizations, they issued final ruling in 2005, which defined, provided more definition of what a quiet zone was, they defined a couple of different types of quiet zones, which leads me to the next one. So, you have a pre-rule quiet zone, which is a quiet zone that existed before these regulations went into effect, and then a new quiet zone, which was created after the regulations into effect, and yours is, yours is a pre-rule quiet zone because it was in place before the regulations came into being. It's a little hard to read, but that's your quiet zone, six crossings, and it's been in place for quite a while, and most of the crossings, I'm sure you're all aware, with the exception of Mass Avenue, are more or less local streets, pretty low-volume traffic-wise, and so, of, not too much concern. Okay, so that's kind of a general thing, so these are, these are the three, the three numbers that we work with. The first one being the Quiet Zone Risk Index, and that is a value that's assigned to your quiet zone, it varies for every single quiet zone, and it's based on the number of crossings, the traffic, the road type, the number of lanes, the traffic volumes, et cetera, and that's, you plug all that information into a, what's called a Quiet Zone Calculator, which is through the Federal Railroad's website, and it will spit out your Quiet Zone Risk Index. So that's, that's the working number. So then you have two other numbers, the Risk Index with Horns, which the calculator also throws out at you, which is their calculation of what the value of your quiet zone would be if the horns could blow at every single intersection or every single crossing. And then you also have the National Significant Risk Threshold, which is calculated every 12 to 24 months, somewhere in that timeframe, which looks at every single crossing nationwide and sets a number. And, so if the Quiet Zone Risk Index comes below either of those two, you're good. However, yours does not. So I have two sheets up there, they're a little bit small, but the upper one is, there's a data sheet for every single crossing, so when I go into the calculator, I pull up the Acton Quiet Zone, and I pick out the six crossings, and the calculator includes all the railroads and every single crossing that they're aware of all across the country. So I hunt down MBTA and pick up the six crossings, and I verify the number of lanes, the number of trains, the road type, the traffic volumes, and also whether or not there were any relevant accidents in the last, in the last five years. So plug all those in and hit calculate, and then it spits out the lower number, or the lower, the lower sheet, which is, gives you the risk index, or the risk value in the, in the rightmost column of numbers, right next to the modify, of each crossing. And, as you can see with yours, with the exception of Mass Avenue, which is a little bit higher, mostly because it's much higher traffic volumes, they're all in the same, same range. Now, up until the beginning of this month, the Massachusetts Avenue Crossing Risk Value was about 81,000, and that is because this, this quiet zone was last established in June of 2014, and then in August of that same year, you had an accident, what you call a significant accident, and so that stays in the calculator, and of course, that raises that value, and that stays in the calculator for about five years. So, it took a little bit over five years for it to exit from the calculator, so these, these numbers are as of earlier this month, so they've dropped back down, and so the risk is evenly spread pretty much through the crossings throughout, throughout this quiet zone. And, so, in the general practice, after a quiet zone is reestablished, established or reestablished, you have between three and five years to establish it again or reestablish it. So, that was June of 2014, so we're past the five-year mark, FRA, they have a lot of crossings to look at, so we're potentially treading on thin ice, they could call at any time and go, excuse me, what are you doing about your quiet zone? So, what all these regulations written up, they listed a set of supplemental safety measures. Now, each crossing, right now, as a minimum, has to have the crossbucks signs, it has to have the pavement marking, the railroad crossing pavement marking, and they should have gates, and in fact, I haven't run across one in this part of the country that does not. So, those absolutely have to be there, and if they're not, then FRA will come in and make them, make them get put into place. But they have a list of these supplemental safety measures, which you can work, that you can, improvements you can make to one or more crossings to improve the safety, and each one is assigned a percentage of equivalent to a horn blowing, and they range from about .6 up to about .85, .87. And there, there's a very, some variations on a theme, permanent closure of a crossing, which they love, and they ideally love to close all of them, a number of variations with four quadrant gates, which we've discussed with Cory, which involves not only gates as you approach the crossing, it involves gates on the exit of the crossing, which prevents traffic from sneaking around a gate, as it were. And then, the couple down at the bottom, which are some neat ones, putting a median in the, in the middle of the road, a channelization, and the picture on the right is, would be the median, and it can be, it can be a raised median, what they call non-traversal, you're not going to drive over it, with or without some kind of a channelization, reflective post, or it can be just the row of reflective posts, and the raised median has a little bit higher credit, but... And the, the raised median has a little bit higher credit, but the, surprisingly, the, just, just the, just the posts alone are, are pretty effective. And then the picture on the left is, is, it would be a four quadrant gate system, and you can see the, the gates on, on the approach and also on, on the exit. And you can put them on automatic, you can put them with cameras, so they can detect people that are still in the crossing, and the, the following gate won't go down, there are several variations on a theme. So when we first started looking at this, now, my, my, I look to go, in, in the, the thing about the, the, the channelization markers is, they're pretty inexpensive, maybe a hundred dollars a foot. And there are some requirements, they like to have them at least a hundred feet long. However, if you have an intersecting road or driveway, you can get it down as, as low as sixty feet, but sixty feet is the minimum, otherwise you, you get very little credit. So I looked at a couple of different crossings, some of them, a couple of your crossings, there isn't really, the, the road just isn't wide enough to add something in the middle of the road to, to, to make and keep it safe. However, there are a couple I looked at, Parker Street, I think you can, you can install these, these medians, but in, in a couple of these, you would have to look at realigning some of the, some of the driveways, and I don't know, we'd have to look at properties and property lines and other, other factors to, to achieve the sixty-foot and still have a, a safe exit into and out of the driveway. But Parker Street is, is one location, Central Street East is another one, and again, from the, from the Housing Association up on the hill, I believe, excuse me, you would have to modify their driveway a little bit, but not, certainly not out of the realm of possibility. You already have a median at Mass Ave, however, it's very short, one side I think is a little over twenty feet, and the other side is about thirty-five feet, if I remember right. So you can take credit for that, but you can take, well, you can take partial credit for it, and I'll, I'll get into that in just, just a little bit. And then the third, the third area I looked at was, was Central Street West, out by the, the farm, and again, that would require modification to their, to their parking lot driveway on one side to, to achieve sixty feet, and I, and I did realize that, that would be work within a, within a buffer zone, so there'd be some environmental permitting involved with that as well. So that brings us to, if we implemented these supplemental safety measures, this is, this is with the measures employed, and these, and these are the, just, just the channelization markers, you get a value that is under both, is, is below your Risk Index with Horns. Now, you'll see that the number on the calculator and the number I show are different by a slight amount, and the calculator can't figure partial credit of a supplemental safety measure. So what, in my own calculations, I took the, the median at Mass Avenue, and I took a credit of twenty-five percent of what the credit value would be. So you don't get, you don't get quite all the credit, but you get most, well, you get twenty-five percent of it, and it's enough in conjunction with some of these other ones to get you under that. Now, when we were previously looking at, at a quad gate system at Mass Avenue, and because the Mass Avenue value before the accident dropped off was so high, it had a huge impact, taking credit for, for a quad gate system dropped you under, with, with, with no problem. However, since the, that, that, that impact has disappeared from the calculator, because everything, you can't get enough of a credit at maybe one or two locations to, to, to make the value of the whole, the whole Quiet Zone under those values, so you kind of need to, to attack most, at least, at least more than half of them in this case. Short and sweet, but any questions?
What's the timing on this?
Well, again, you, you've already exceeded the five-year period, again, it's about six months or so. As long as you're actively working to improve the Quiet Zone, usually Federal Railroad will, will give you time, as we communicate to them, that say, we're looking at, we're aware of what's the timeline, we're aware of what's going on, and, and they'll say, okay. And they don't like to see it go on forever, but it certainly can buy you, you know, six months, six to nine months.
Dean?
I guess, you know, a couple of my thoughts is, would be, you know, the, the cost involved in this, whether this is something that's going to be incorporated in the Public Works Department budget for this year, and I noticed that, you know, conceivably, there might be some agreements required to change people's driveways, and, you know, that, that could certainly take us a long time to negotiate, hopefully they'd agree to it.
So with regard to funding, annual town meeting in two thousand and eighteen appropriated a hundred and forty thousand for this issue, and we have just under a hundred thousand left to, you know, so a lot of it was used for the study and some other measures, but we have about just under a hundred to implement some of these measures.
Do you, do you think that's sufficient funding?
Depending on the course that we take, that's part of what we're discussing and starting to have a conversation about tonight, because if, if the board is interested in some major changes, I don't know that it would be enough, but some of the measures that have been discussed tonight, I believe would fit in that appropriation, the, the stand-up things.
The channelization.
The channelization.
They're, they're pretty inexpensive, but there, there are other things that we discussed early on, Paul Campbell, your, your, your former city engineer. Arlington Street, now I looked at that and, and that maze of parking and subdivided areas in there, and he and I discussed this, and it would, it would have been neat if, if, say, we could not necessarily close it, make it one-way, that gets, gets you a, a big credit. It would also be, be, be great if you could extend the median on Mass Avenue, I know there are a lot of driveways and there's, and there's a side road right there, but potentially you could, you could, and I don't know what, what the situation is with, with the people who own all the parking, but if you could reconfigure that and, and move the driveway access farther out and, and push the median a little bit, not necessarily even to sixty feet, but give you a, a few more feet to, to, to claim a little more credit. Some things to think about.
John?
David?
So just for my clarification, you, you, sorry, just for my clarification, you're saying that if we made these median changes to both crossings on Central Street and the crossing at Parker Street, we would be under the, the guidelines, which would allow us to continue the Quiet Zone?
Correct, correct. Now, that's not to say, next time they go through their calculation that, that, and I, now I've been tracking these, the, the National Significant Risk Threshold, sorry, for probably about ten years, and it, it goes up as well as down, and it's, and it, they look at accidents nationwide, and there's a whole lot of, of, of information that goes into it, so, but when I started, it was up around twenty, twenty thousand, and now it's down to just under fourteen thousand. So it's slowly going down as crossings get safer, as crossings are closed, as crossings are, are divided vertically.
And that, that would be computed again in two and a half years or so?
It's between, no, this, this is on a, on a irregular basis, anywhere between a year and two years.
But I thought you said, didn't you say earlier that we get reassessed every three years?
This...
So if we made these changes now and got...
If, if you get, if you made these, you'd be good for at least three years.
Right, okay, that's right, thank you.
Yes, yeah. As I was, what I was saying is, is, next time, in, in three years, these values could be up or down and...
David?
The purpose of the median is just slow, traffic slows down automatically if there's a median as they're approaching the crossing?
Yeah, it's a psychological thing a lot, especially, especially just the paddles, you can drive over them, don't tell anybody I told you that, you didn't hear that, but in, in other towns, they've been put up and, and people have, they just drive over them. But psychologically, it, it gives you, it, it keeps you on the right side of the road, and it keeps you from going around the end of the, the gate arm at, at the crossing.
I was a little confused about Parker Street, I, I know you've got some driveway changes there, but I thought you said, your diagram has a median in there, I thought you said the road wasn't wide enough to put a median in there.
Parker Street, I believe, is, the, 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 there was one small road on, I don't remember, is it Martin?
Martin.
That was very narrow.
Maybe it was Martin, okay.
And, and there was a garage right next to the tracks, and so I just discounted that one. But I, I, I was out there and I measured, and I think maybe, in a couple of cases, maybe you can add a little pavement on the outside just to make it consistent with and, and whatnot, so, yeah. Small impacts.
Thank you. John?
So I guess in terms of next steps, this report, they've been working on this, and this is sort of the first public presentation of it, we have, or my office, and I think Corey's office has been, received requests and, and comments from folks in West Acton or the frequent West Acton that would like to see street scape improvements, I'm not sure if this is what they had in mind, but it's certainly something that will, I think, as a next step, perhaps we could have a dedicated night for a discussion about this with, with a group that you think is appropriate, or yourselves, and, and talk about what we'll do first, and what, what we need to do first and what we will do first, and if there's ideas out there that, that we can use.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Tara?
So I love the idea of the forum, because I have a long list of questions about medians and New London Pizza, how much business they'll lose, and whether fencing along the, no, this calculation, is it something that we really have to submit to? You know, there's state law regarding noise, and if there's no actual justification, Windsor Ave, they talked about making it a one-way and found out that there were no accidents there ever, that despite popular opinion, that it was perfectly safe, and so I would like very much to work to avoid this, as much infrastructure as possible, I noticed that after the second train track went in, you know, so a lot of people supported the idea of the second train track, and then they maybe didn't have any idea what this could do to our village, because if you lose the London Pizza, because, you know, you put in a median strip, and so, anyway, I would like very much an opportunity to participate in this process, and I don't think I'd like anything to happen yet, except perhaps a notice declaring our right to continue the whistle ban despite any preconceived deadlines that an agency is deciding, you know, I don't think that an agency can decide that something preempts home rule, so I would like very much for there to be a forum and a notice sent to the state right away that we're working on this, thank you.
John?
Just to clarify, it, it's a federally regulated crossing, and such notice might cause them to look closely at it more quickly.
I see, okay, I take back my idea about the notice, but I would like very much for our town to exert its home rule rights, federal anything doesn't automatically preempt, thank you.
Hey, this question is for Adam.
Could you, excuse me, could you identify yourself, name and address?
Yes, my name is Sendhil Kabalan, I live in Acton, the address is fifty-five Lexington Drive, and you had mentioned that FRA considers, as long as the city is taking, you know, looking into this, like the Quiet Zone, you know, they would, you know, we can slide by, or, so would FRA consider the study as, you know, like the, the Acton City is looking into this effect, and would that account as, okay, the city is taking all the right measures?
Absolutely. As, as long as you're making progress towards making your...
As, as long as you're making your, your, your progress towards making your Quiet Zone meet the criteria, yes, they, and, and as I said, they won't, they won't let it go on forever, you, you need to show results after, after some undefined time, but I would say, you know, between six and nine, nine months at, at a maximum. Because as, as I noted, you've already exceeded the five-year cutoff for re-establishment of the Quiet Zone, so the clock is ticking.
Thank you. Board discussion? We'll go ahead with talking with John about a forum?
Yes, can I just make one comment, though, from what I heard, again, I, I verified with him, no changes to the Mass Ave intersection are required to meet the, the guidelines?
The, no, you're correct, there, there are other options you can pursue that will let you leave Mass Ave as it is, there are things you can do to Mass Ave that would also qualify, it's, it's a matter of, of what options you choose to implement from the, the, the variety that's available.
Yes, if we, if we, it didn't make sense to extend the medians at West Acton to sixty feet, which may be difficult.
Correct, no, I'm not, I'm...
It may make more sense, even though it's a, you know, at some point in the future, putting in quad gates there instead of that, so, but, you know, again, from what you said, if, if we were able to make the changes at Parker and both of the crossings on Central, then we're okay for at least three years.
Yes, and, and quite possibly longer.
Okay, we'll take this up with John and schedule a meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take the Boxborough Farmers Market location up next, is there someone here from the Farmers Market?
Yes, representatives from ABFM are in attendance to answer any questions, the request before you is, as we did in two thousand and nineteen, the request is to allow for the market to be held on a portion of Windsor and, and then Pearl, it was done this year as a one-year trial basis, and I've checked with all staff, including public safety, and there are no concerns with continuing the practice again next year.
Do you have something?
We're, we're with the Farmers Market, so if you had questions, we could answer them.
Okay, I think since it worked well, we don't need to have a discussion, is there a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we approve Acton Boxborough Farmers Market twenty-twenty season location at Pearl Street and Windsor Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay. The next is to approve the Cable Advisory Committee's response on the town's cable licensing ascertainment with Comcast.
Yes, I think I'm going to be handling that, Oleg Volinsky cannot, who's Chair of the Cable Advisory Committee, couldn't make the meeting tonight, and I didn't think it was necessary for, for our Council, Bill Solomon, to be here, he sent a memo to the Board, which is in the packet, explaining the, the process ahead, this is for the renewal of the license for Comcast, which I believe expires later this year. It's an informal process that kicks off with, the Board of Selectmen is the cable licensing, as a cable licensing authority in town, authorizing the Chair of the Cable Advisory Committee and the Town Manager to forward to Comcast of Massachusetts its needs request, and this is based on community input, it's called the ascertainment letter, ascertaining the needs, and then within approximately forty-five days, Comcast will send back a proposal based on those needs, and then the two sides will... And then, um, the two sides will will negotiate, um, from there. It's a somewhat lengthy process, as I understand. And it, uh, but this kicks it off. So the motion that I would, I would move as follows, that the Board of Selectmen, um, as cable television licensing issuing authority, vote to request and authorize the Chair of the Cable Advisory Committee and the Town Manager to forward the town of Acton's request for response to ascertainment and accompanying ascertainment record to Comcast Inc. of Massachusetts Three, Comer Inc.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Budget.
Thank you. So, um, the Town Manager's, uh, recommended budget we presented to you on December second of two thousand nineteen. The budget that we presented was a three percent increase in municipal spending over last year. The operating budget, uh, that we proposed increased, um, just under two and a half percent, or exactly two and a half percent. And then there was capital projects, um, that were added to target investments in in Board of Selectmen priorities, which made a total investment additionally, three percent over last year. Uh, since that time of that initial presentation, we've had a few things change with the budget. Uh, one is, uh, the result of very good work of our team, uh, excellent, uh, grant writing. Uh, we've we've put a lot of work into that this year and the it's beginning to bear a lot of fruit. The state just notified us last week that we were awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant through the Community Compact Cabinet Information Technology Grant Program. This hundred fifty thousand dollar grant will will use to upgrade all the software and equipment in the dispatch center. And as you recall, in the FY twenty-one recommendation, we had actually proposed a hundred and eighty-five thousand for that same purpose. So with this grant, uh, we're able to reduce the amount that we'll actually need to, uh, request in the budget down to forty thousand, freeing up resources that, uh, I have a recommendation for how to reallocate to high priority needs. Additionally, at the first January meeting, this board, um, took a vote to, um, not not recommend or to, um, seek funding for the River Street Dam through the Community Preservation Committee rather than, as I had proposed, fund it from free cash in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And in the motion that you voted on, it is specifically directed me to find another use for the funding, an opportunity which I enjoyed. So, uh, with those two, uh, resources freed up, uh, you know, and I would say that with the budget development this year, the staff worked very hard to meet, uh, what I was requiring of them in a year that some major capital projects were being requested of the taxpayers. We wanted to make sure that any, uh, funding that we request, uh, is is level services and that we keep the increases to a minimum. So there were several things that we weren't able to fund in the initial request. So that brings us to today. Um, so what I'm proposing to change in the budget recommendation to you is the following. I'd like to propose that we, uh, to add two projects to the capital plan and that we increase, in in doing so, increase the total municipal spending, sorry, decrease total municipal spending from a three percent increase over last year to a two point nine four percent increase last year. This is responsive to, uh, concerns we've heard from the Finance Committee about looking for ways to find reductions, even though it's been a tough year, and, uh, I think this is a way that we can do that. So the two projects that we're proposing are, one, the FY twenty-one Sustainability Policy Implementation Program, a project in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, leading up to the budget process, Acton Green Advisory Board had met, uh, the Chair met with me and said, "The board strongly advises that you bring on, uh, a staff person like Concord has and a few other communities have to, uh, advance all the sustainability programs and initiatives that we want you to do as a community and that the board has directed through their policy direction." Unfortunately, uh, we weren't able to include that in the budget, but with this resource, I'm proposing to use a contractor to fill that role and hire, uh, a consultant to help support efforts that are ongoing in the community. Additionally, with that funding, the Police Department's Cruiser Replacement Program, as you know, they presented to the Finance Committee uh, late last year about how they intend to transition the entire cruiser fleet from gasoline-powered cruiser, um, Ford Explorers to hybrid, uh, which saves substantially on gas. They cost a little bit more to invest in upfront. Uh, we'd like to use this funding to add two more of those cruisers to the fleet this year, uh, which we weren't able to fund initially. Two other areas are increasing the amount of investment we're making in charging stations. Corey's been doing a great job, uh, using, uh, incentives available through the utility, and he actually just got us a grant to put another one behind Town Hall. But, uh, everywhere I go, at the senior center last week, I had three different people ask me for charging stations, not necessarily at the senior center, but just throughout town. So it's something that, uh, we're going to continue to need, and this funding would be used for that purpose. Uh, and finally, there is a tree planting program that's being promote, proposed for historic districts. Uh, it's proposed through the Community Preservation, uh, funding. We also have some targeted investments, um, in projects that will include tree replanting. We weren't able to add a resource for new street trees outside of historic districts, historic districts, so I'd like to use some of this funding for that as well. Uh, so those are the the items that would be covered in the two hundred thousand. Uh, the second item is a facility capital plan study in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Uh, when I arrived here, uh, last year or a year and a half ago, there was a talk of needing a long-term capital plan for facilities. It was a goal of the Board of Selectmen to work on that, uh, last year. Uh, we've done a lot to try to identify our five-year needs, but the desire from folks is to have a longer look. And a study like this would allow us to use the work that we've already completed, the facility study that was done in the last five years, the ADA Transition Plan, which we're going to present to you next month, um, and other work that we've done in our buildings, and lay out a, in the same way that the schools did recently, is lay out a ten-to-fifteen-year investment, uh, strategy for how to, uh, handle deferred maintenance and then reinvest on our facilities over the long term, understanding what our needs will be. In addition to that, I think we could also include in this project two or three things that are important, uh, in addition to just facility investment. One is making a dent in all the needs identified in the ADA Transition Plan. Two is laying out a roadmap for transitioning our facilities away from fossil fuel heating. That's a long-term, um, roadmap, but it's one that, uh, will take some thought now. And the sooner we start thinking about it in the context of our of our building facility planning, I think it, the better the work will be. And finally, uh, making sure that we align any upcoming and planned roof projects with potential solar installations. So it's a really all-encompassing facility study. Um, so those two items total two hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, so the total amount being requested from capital, uh, the net difference will, it'll go from nine hundred and thirteen down to eight hundred and ninety. So there'll be twenty-three thousand dollars, um, that will not be, um, requested. And if the board supports this, uh, we could then, um, work with the ALG, uh, next week. And I think that'll help us, uh, close the gap with with our with our budget this year.
Great. Is there a motion or a question?
Yeah, um, discussion about, uh, hiring a consultant to work with the Green Advisory Board. What do you think the dollar value of that is? Uh, how many hours are expected? Can I have some more details on that?
Yes, thank you for the question. The my, the way I envision it, it would actually be working, uh, of course, support the the Green Advisory Board, but it'd be working with town staff, um, our our facility team, our Public Works Director, uh, my office, uh, it would be a contractor that we work with on that. One of their tasks would be to support, uh, implementing the carbon neutrality study that the the Green Advisory Board, uh, worked on last year. The cost is, uh, forty to fifty thousand dollars. I should also add that I'm looking at MAPC and their technical assistance programs, um, Metro, Massachusetts. MAPC is our regional planning agency.
No, check.
Yeah, so and they they offer technical assistance sometimes, so I'm looking at that as a potential way to offset any costs associated with that. And additionally, uh, we're looking at any collaborations that may be out there with other communities looking into the same thing. Thank you.
Any other questions?
David? Yeah, no, I just wanted to say I'm very supportive of 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 all these things, uh, you know, uh, turning over our our police cruisers to hybrids more quickly, uh, the tree planting program in areas of town that, um, that are not covered by the tree planting in historic areas. Uh, and then the 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 studies going forward for, um, uh, you know, how to, you know, long-term transition our buildings away from fossil fuels and to add solar roofs. I think all all those are good things in my mind.
Is there a motion to support, John?
Yeah, I would move, um, that, um, we support the, um, the town budget, um, as amended, um, by our manager this evening.
Sir?
And send it on to the Finance Committee.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
Can I just make one more comment? Uh, just kudos to the town staff for, um, uh, you know, going through the effort of making these uh, grant applications and things, and they they make a big difference, allow us to get much more bang for our tax dollar.
Peter?
No, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Yes?
Am I on? Good. Deborah Symes, Concord Road. Um, really, I'm just up here to, um, slather praise on the town manager and his staff. Um, you know, as an environmental kind of girl, I'm really pretty thrilled with a lot of this and have and support, um, what John is suggesting really strongly. The tree planting program is awesome. It's one of the, you know, it's one of the great things you can do in terms of sucking carbon back out of the atmosphere is to get more trees in the ground. Um, and all the other, all the other advances that we're talking about here really go to a lot of the things, both of the sustainability policy identified or the framework that identified, and also to some of the, um, Selectmen's goals that were that were identified last year. So I'm very pleased with this and appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
So motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Sean. That's a big step forward.
Thank you. So in accordance with the charter, um, I will transmit the budget to the Finance Committee, uh, tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Okay. Review and consider approval of the memorandum of agreement with Powder Mill LLC regarding Power Mill Place Affordable Housing Development.
Thank you. So, um, in two thousand and nineteen, the board, um, heard and supported the application to the local initiative petition program for the apartments at Powder Mill. And at the time, identified a few concerns that, uh, you wanted the development team to address before the project was brought forward, um, to the Board of Appeals for their consideration of a comprehensive permit. Uh, the development team, uh, we've been working closely, uh, Town Council and I have been working closely with, uh, the development team's attorney and also our engineering staff and public work staff have been working as well to make sure that the identified issues mostly related to wastewater are addressed in the agreement and, um, are reflective of what, believe, the the board was looking for. So the draft memorandum that's before you, um, I can take you through, uh, just what it says page by page. Uh, we do, I do have an execution copy that is, um, identical to what's before you, except for the space on page two was filled in with the correct plan reference. Um, so, but just to take you through it, um, and also just an update, we expect the development team to, um, submit an application to the Board of Appeals within the next week or two. They received their letter from the state earlier in January, uh, which gave them sort of the the eligibility letter to allow them to move forward. So the Powder Mill Apartments is proposing two hundred and three rental units, fifty-nine of those being affordable, affordable. And then ten percent of those are three-bedroom, as required. The, uh, Powder Mill is not connected to Town Sewer and, uh, as part of this agreement, the development team would make a connection to the existing wastewater facility that is on the other side of the Assabett River, uh, but they would do so by constructing a new, uh, force main of, um, several thousand feet, uh, of Powder Mill Road. And then they would go also up High Street and connect to an existing pump station on High Street. Um, as part of, as part of doing that, they'll have to cross a bridge over there. There's a, there's a small bridge on Powder Mill Road that they'll have to cross. They'll also have to construct a pump station somewhere, uh, where it exits their property to bring it, um, towards the bridge. Uh, they would also be upgrading in several ways, the pump station, the existing pump station on High Street, and also the existing pump station on Adams Street. They'd also be making some targeted improvements to components within the plant that, uh, are necessary to support the new flow that's being proposed. The project will, uh, be constructed in such a way that creates a force main to serve the new Powder Mill Place. It will also be constructed in a way to allow, uh, future connections for properties that are along the route on Powder Mill. There will also be a stub, um, is the technical term, maybe, for it, uh, which would allow potential expansion in the event that the community wants to up Sudbury Road. Um, there is a subdivision up there, and then our senior senator and a few other commercial properties are located up there, up there. The total, and then in addition to the sewer infrastructure work, um, for consideration of the potential, um, strains such a project, uh, may put on the wastewater discharge capacity, um, that we have. They would agree to, uh, pay the town in the amount of, uh, just under a half a million dollars, uh, which is an amount equal to what it would cost to construct a post-treatment holding tank, which would serve as an equalizer. And if there was a peak day, uh, peak day of of rain and and use, uh, and the system were about to be overloaded, this would serve as a place for that treated water to sit, um, to allow time for the peak period to pass, and then the water could be distributed to the rapid infiltration basins afterwards. So the design is actually an exhibit. The design of the water infrastructure is at thirty percent, and it's an exhibit of the memorandum of agreement, and it also lays out the improvements to the pump stations in great detail. Um, our consulting engineer, Woodin Curran, has reviewed the plans, and they actually requested several items that, um, they felt if we were doing it, we would have added to the project. And the development team wasn't excited about it, but they agreed to it, um, such as standalone generators for each new pump station and and things that really, uh, will allow us to, once the project is completed and the sewer infrastructure is built, they would be handing it over, so to speak, to the town, and they would be in a position for us to maintain it going forward without any additional investment needed. So that's the sewer, um, part of the project. There are also, um, components related to, if you go, so I just walked through basically the the first page, first two pages. The value of the sewer improvements being provided, um, are approximately four million eight hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and that's added to the, when you add that to the four hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars for the holding tank, the total investment, um, is five point three million. Uh, as you know, the current sewer privilege fee that's in place is just over twelve thousand per sewer betterment, sewer betterment unit. And, uh, under, you know, given the, what's proposed on this site, the current sewer privilege fee would be just fee would be just over $2 million, if the infrastructure exists and we were going to issue them a privilege fee. So the amount of investment being made into the system is twice the current, is more than twice the current privilege fee amount. We've also negotiated terms to provide that the development team contributes to our transportation programs. We, as part of the agreement, they would join Crosstown Connect. As part of the agreement, they would host or sponsor a bus stop. Where, as you know, we're actively working on adding more shuttles to the South Acton train station to keep cars from trying to come to our station. Having a shuttle stop here would provide an opportunity for folks to access the train without having to drive to the T-stop, the train station, rather. The other items, there was discussion about a passive recreation path along the new riverfront. As, so part of the project there, they're restoring a lot of riverfront that's currently paved or, or used for industrial use, and they're going to be restoring a lot of that. And there was interest shown in making that accessible in some ways to the public to enjoy. And so, page, item 2.0C says that Powder Mill should construct a walking or passive recreational path along the riverfront and present to the extent permitted. They would also, a, a project of this size and this magnitude and the pace that we expect this project to move often would create more demand on our building department and inspectional team than we are able to meet. And in cases like this, as we're doing in Avalon, we've asked the development team to cover the cost that we would incur to hire a third-party inspector or to pay our inspectors overtime. So that amount is identified on, in section three. $50,000 would be set aside for that purpose in the event that it's needed. Item number four states very clearly that this agreement does not obligate the Acton ZBA to issue a comprehensive permit with or without conditions, and the parties do not intend to affect the Acton ZBA's jurisdiction review of the project through this agreement. So that's just very clearly making, make it clear to the public and the developer that just, if, if the board agrees to this, it has no bearing on what the Board of Appeals will do. And then the rest of it is just legal, legal language. If you want me to go through, I'm happy to.
Come on, Bo-Chambo. Board discussion? We visited the site in the fall?
Yes, we were out there this past summer, yes.
Peter?
Yeah, I just, I just have a question about how this affects other properties that are along the new line they're going to build. I guess the Subaru dealer, I assume on the other side of 62 also would be able to connect into this new line, the electrical supply, the other companies that are along there. So, does this mean they don't, since the Powder Mill Place developer is paying the full cost, $5,338,000 to build this line, does that mean there are no betterments assessed against the properties that are on the line?
Well, the betterments are, by definition, distributing money that the town spends on the infrastructure. So if the town doesn't spend any money on the infrastructure, there wouldn't be a betterment. However, a privilege fee would still apply, whatever privilege fee is in place at the time that the, those property owners decide to connect.
Okay, they, I mean, they seem to have addressed all the issues that I remember having raised at, at the hearing, which I guess was almost a year ago, last spring. I think we talked to them.
Tara?
Tara Frederick, West Acton. So I have some questions and a comment. First of all, I had been asking for a copy of this memorandum of agreement. I have not seen it on DocuShare, and so I think it's unfortunate that something so large that includes sewer capacity issues after the whole West Acton thing, that we didn't get a copy so that we could look at this ahead of time. So I do have a lot of questions, and I actually hope that you don't approve this tonight so that we can get comments in. So it's, in the Mass Works grant, there was a capacity, sewer capacity chart that made it look like the West Acton project would use up effectively all of the available capacity, and that the Powder Mill Place would require a similar amount of capacity. And there was this dotted line drawn over the, the amount of capacity available, showing that it was about the same capacity as that which would be required for the proposed West Acton project. So in my view, somebody who doesn't want the West Acton to be sewered, doesn't think, I don't think it needs it, I would rather that this $5 million go to, or the excess of the difference in the privilege fees, et cetera, say a couple million dollars, go to reducing the, the income levels for people so that you're actually using the, the environmental resources for people who truly need the housing, as opposed to creating more capacity for the sewers to allow them to have higher-priced units. And this is the type of comments that I would like to make, because these have been closed-door sessions, these haven't been negotiated in public. So I have a couple of questions here. So the 5 million, are you proposing that you waive the privilege fees? Is that what you're proposing, the 12,000, whatever it was? I thought we were going to talk about raising them, and this would have been an excellent opportunity to get money for the refresh of the plant. Instead, I'm hearing half a million dollars for the refresh of a plant where the Mass Works grant was talking $5 million. So the South Acton residents, I would think, or the existing sewer users would be concerned that this money was going to creating new plant with new capacity that, you know, of no cost to the town, except for that when it comes to be refreshed, who pays for it? So these are questions I think that I feel like I need answers to before we agree to something so extraordinary. I mean, I'm in favor of working towards the 10%. I like the idea of the contractor, you know, building inspector and the public access. I love all the things that you're talking about that are good, but I feel like this is a big question relative to capacity, that I feel like we could be perhaps using the money for, you know, more affordable, actual, you know, lower-income affordable housing as opposed to whatever the market will bear. And so I urge you not to approve this tonight, to give this to the public, because we have not seen a copy of this. So you're discussing a document, I don't even know how many pages long, where we have not seen the information.
Yeah, are, are we meeting next Monday night?
Yes.
So would a delay of one week, would that, would that hurt the project from going forward?
No.
Would that give you enough time?
Thank you. Oh, absolutely. I haven't, I haven't seen it, so I don't know. But I, based on what John was saying, it seems like standard stuff to talk about, but I would like to meet with each of you and, and go through some of the, at least a couple of you, and go through the capacity things relative, and the dollars relative to, you know, if we really want to, you know, work on that Acton Housing Authority list, that this money I think can be better spent. But thank you.
I just want to clarify, I apologize, it wasn't in the packet. We had a lot of people out of the office this afternoon when it was going to go in. The amount that the, the $5 million, so let me just break down the numbers again. So 4.8 million dollars is the estimate of the infrastructure work that the developer will be doing. It may cost 4.9, it may cost 4.7. That's the estimate of the work that they're going to do, and it's proposed in such a way that it's in lieu of a privilege fee. The five, the 497,000 is the amount that will be paid to, to the sewer enterprise for, for the holding tank. The, the other money will not be paid to the sewer enterprise, it'll be just in-kind construction of sewer infrastructure.
The conversation I'd like to have is that, normally speaking, the privilege fee goes to help the existing plant get refreshed, et cetera, whereas the 5 million, 4.8 million will go to building something that they need for the, you know, the project. So, and then I would like to explore how much it would cost if they weren't going to do the tanks, and I think you're saying that that's the 475,000, you know, it's under 500,000. But still, that would, in my mind, decrease the income levels somewhat. But it's also the issue of how much of that could have gone to refreshing the plant, and you're saying that maybe this is this half-million-dollar donation or whatever. But I'd like to go over these, you know, standing here at the podium, never having seen the document and trying to memorize numbers, I'd like very much to look at the document, and I appreciate John's suggestion to wait a week, and I look forward to seeing the document. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I am too.
Yeah?
Personally, I, I, I think the manager and the development team have done a great job negotiating this, and I really don't see the point in delaying a week.
Anyone else?
Well, I would, I would agree with you, Dean, that John and his team and, you know, Pickering Cook, our town council, have done an excellent job putting this together, and it's a, it's a crucial project, you know, for those in attendance tonight and those on, on television. This project will get us to the magic 10% number based on the 2010 census, and will put us in relatively easy-striking distance of the 10% reset number coming out of the 2020 census. But, you know, it sounds like we can wait a week. I think it's important because the document just really got to us, you know, today, and it wasn't in final form until this evening. And if we just wait a week, I don't see where it, where it hurts. I think we will all support it.
In John's, I'll, sure, you can wait a week, but I think the longer you wait, the more pressure you're putting on the ZBA, and I don't think that that's what you intend to do. I think that you should let the questions and let the controversy or the, the thing happen before the ZBA, and not before you guys, because you're not the final deciders. I mean, you've made the plan, but it's the ZBA that has to accept it, not you guys.
In response, may I just say that I'm not opposing the project, I'm questioning the sewer finances and the sewer plan, and I think has nothing to do with the ZBA as the legal, you know, as John has already said, it's not, doesn't provide pressure.
Okay. Dean?
I, I would move that we approve the memorandum of agreement presented to us at this time.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I, I'm not sure what the objection would be to it. I, I, part of it sounded to be that it might affect the rents in this development. I don't believe that is true. I mean, the rents are set, particularly for the low-income units, are set by the state. The maximum rents are set for those units, so I don't see how this deal could affect the rents that are going to be charged to the low-income residents. I'm confident that Woodard and Kern and our own town engineering staff have analyzed the effects on the sewer system and, and gotten everything they need from the design and whatnot to ensure that the town's protected, so I feel comfortable voting for it tonight.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstention?
Abstention.
All right. Four to one. Thank you. Thank you, John. Sewer regulations. David?
So there are really two things here. Maybe we could do the second one first, because it's, it's, I think that tonight's part would be very short. Discussing sewer privilege fees, I guess we could do this tonight, but I was going to, going to propose that we, next week, we can, we have a, an item on the agenda for the sewer commissioners to actually set an updated privilege fee. You know, I've mentioned this kind of in passing several times this year, but I, I'd like to just propose that we put it on the agenda for next week, and we, in our function as sewer commissioners, we consider and set updated privilege fees.
No question? With the sewer privilege fee, that was set in 2002. Are we permitted to amend that?
It's not an amendment, we can set it anytime we want.
Okay. So we can adjust it upwards or downwards?
Yeah, it, it, it's just more or less coincidentally set to the same as the original betterment amount. And in that vein, we could set it, you know, one of the choices for setting it would be to set it to what the betterments would have been for the West Acton project, because we know that's what it costs us to implement a, you know, a, a betterment unit of sewer in a, in a district with mixed business and residential, which is, the average there was 36.5. So we could set it to 36.5, we could set it to anything we want. You know, that maybe that's a little bit high, maybe we want to set it around $30,000. We could also set it even higher. You know, if we went, if we sewered an entire single-family district with no businesses in it, it would cost probably about $60,000 per betterment unit to do that. And so, you know, I think you can make an argument anyway. I mean, I, for me, I, I would propose that we set it somewhere between 30,000 and 36.5. But, you know, we can, anyway, I'm just, right now, I'm just proposing that we put this on the agenda for next week and act as sewer commissioners and make a decision.
Right now, it's 12,000?
12,300, I think.
John?
Were, were we supposed to have a, a further discussion on sewers generally tonight?
Yes, there, there are two items on, in this line item. If you look at Agenda Item 7, it says sewer regulations and bylaws and updates to the privilege fee. I said I was just discussing the second first in order to just, because I, my proposal is just that we put it on the agenda for next week, if everybody's agreed to that. We, I don't think we need to vote on that, John can make sure it's on the agenda for next week. The, the first one, part, is the thing that we delayed from the last meeting, which was discussing as, as kind of an epilogue to the existing sewer project, possible changes to the bylaws, where, which would have allowed us to address many of the objections, or actually, most of the objections to the, the project that we had. And so my, my suggestion was kind of as an epilogue to the, the project that the, the existing sewer committee, we, we asked the existing sewer committee to propose changes to the bylaws. They would come back to us, we would put them on a future town meeting warrant or not, depending on what, what we thought we wanted to do. You know, these changes to the bylaws are not a new project or anything, and in fact, I don't think that we should propose a new project at the moment. I think that the, a new project should be in the priority setting of some future board, you know, could be this year's board, next year's board, something like that. But I, I do think that while it's fresh in our mind, we should adjust the, or at least looking at potentially adjusting the, the bylaws. In the ways that I, I could just, to refresh everybody's memory, there were three areas that we could potentially adjust the, the bylaws. It requires some data gathering from other towns and things like that, so it takes some time. The, the three areas are whether the, any, some future sewer project could be funded in some way other than just purely betterments. We're the only town in the Commonwealth that funds our sewer projects only with betterments, and we know that the, the high cost of the betterments was one of the main objections. The second thing was whether we can have a, a force main or other type of sewer pipe in town that's not intended for connections and we just don't better people. That's affect, the effective law now, and the combination of town and state law, we'd have to better them, and then we would have to abate them according to state law. But it just could, changing the sewer bylaws would allow us to make that project more, that, that process more flexible. And the third thing is to study whether we could have a different form of paying betterments, and whether they could be paid after hookup, so there would be no betterment at the time of the project, or rather, they'd be paid later. That involves some investigation to see what other towns do in that regard. There is some flexibility there, but it comes with some constraints under law, so, I mean, it needs some study to determine what we could do. So those three areas.
Have we reached out to other towns for them?
No, I think that would be No, I think that would be part of this process. There's part of the, we'd be asking the sewer committee to reach out and gather this data. I mean, we'd have to determine the towns in the Commonwealth which would be appropriate to gather the data from. You know, for example, the third point of whether, you know, the sewer projects could be paid for at hookup time. We have to find the towns that have done that and ask them how they work that into existing state law and what, you know, whatever they had to do. Sorry, that, it was, it wasn't included in the packet again, but that's what I had proposed two weeks ago. And two weeks ago, we decided to delay and decide today.
So this will come back in the future?
Yes, if we decide to do this, the sewer committee would just make this study and then they would come back to us with proposed changes to the sewer bylaws. And then if we like them, then we would put them on a future town meeting warrant. I don't think it could be done by this annual town meeting. There's not enough time.
So do we need direction to the sewer committee?
Well, yes, I think we need to decide if we want to do this or not.
I think we should reach out to other towns and find out what they're doing.
I think so too, because again, as far as the first point, we're the only town that does all betterment-funded sewer projects. And we know what Concord does. We've used that as an example a number of times, but we don't know what, you know, the average town does. And we need to reach out to many more towns, as you say.
So you're suggesting we consider this next week?
No, I'm considering, we delayed it to this week from our last meeting two weeks ago. So I'm sorry to get things confused here. There are two, one light item for really two separate things. What I'm suggesting for setting the privilege fee, which is an act of the sewer commissioners, we do that on the, we add an agenda item next week. And I don't think we have to do anything to that unless someone objects. We can just ask John to add that as an agenda item for next week. As far as the thing to look into sewer bylaws changes, that's really an act for the board, not for the sewer commissioners. And it's just direction to, you know, since these things are fresh in our mind from the current project, to see whether we might have alleviated a number of people's concerns if there were changes to bylaws. I think we should look into them while that's fresh in our minds.
Well, the question I would have with that was, who does that? I mean, we have a sewer, we have a sewer committee, right? An ongoing sewer committee. Seems to me that should be, that charge ought to be updated. If we, it ought to be the sewer committee that would look into all these other towns and how they deal with these issues and what, come back to us with recommendations for what bylaw changes might be appropriate. So I would like to see some, something in writing that makes this clearer than just, you know, voting without some policy or some updated charge to the sewer committee.
So I did write this up for the, our last meeting, unfortunately, it wasn't included in the packet. We could look back in the packet for last time. But to your second thing, for the, you know, kind of longer-term charge, I agree with that. I just think it's a, you know, it should be done as part of the priority setting for a future board as to whether, you know, we wanted to have it project-based or people have written us saying that we should create wastewater districts or whatever the, you know, the priority is for, you know, future sewer actions.
But presently, can we ask the sewer committee to research other towns?
That's my proposal.
Yes.
Just as a follow-up to the?
Yes. John?
Yeah. I would see, David, what you're proposing as really a final act of what the West Acton Sewer Advisory Committee does. I think it's information, you know, that we should have. And then the, this particular committee, the West Acton Sewer Advisory Committee, needs to sunset and be dissolved. I mean, I think there has to be a recognition of the vote on December 10th that was so strongly against, you know, searing of West Acton. And, you know, I think, you know, we have to, you know, step up and say, that's it for now on West Acton sewers and not create anything that, well, here's a backdoor sewer proposal and we're coming back within a year. I've been reaching out to a number of people, Nancy and Mike and Chris, and particularly Ron Beck, who I've known for many, many years. And he, in a follow-up communication with me, you know, posed this idea. He looks at, let's look at a broader solution for the town as a whole and then come back and only propose sewer expansion when it's able to be presented properly in the context of what is the solution for the whole town. To me, that's Ron. The deliberation should be, what we come up with is one solution for the town as a whole, such as wastewater management districts. Or should we propose a hybrid solution for the town, which may be sewers for one section, cluster systems for another area and wastewater management districts for the rest? So, you know, I would like to hear, you know, further comments from the, you know, people in the audience when, after Dean finishes, you know, with his comments. But I think we have to look for a broad solution, you know, for the town. Recognize what the clear vote of town meeting was on December 10th and not send out any message that we're looking to come back in six months or a year with another, you know, West Acton proposal. But certainly take the information that your committee would like to research, you know, as its final act and.
Yeah, I agree with that. And, you know, Ron's ideas of wastewater districts is an interesting idea. I mean, but to me, that's, as I've said a couple of times, that's, you know, part of a priority setting, I think, for a future board. Whether we directed some future committee to do that or something else, that's, you know, a decision for that time.
Dean?
Yeah, I'll agree with the chair that, you know, I think it's worthwhile to have the existing sewer committee reach out to some other towns and get a little bit of basic research done. And then, you know, not go any further than that, just bring that back to us. So we'll have it in our back pocket, so to speak, but that probably is the end of it.
So are you saying that just the raw research and not propose a change to the bylaws or propose to change to the bylaws based on the research? And then this board would decide, you know, what bylaw changes we wanted to move forward with?
I think just the, just the raw research, just give us some background information. And I agree with what Selectman Benson said about, and you, about bringing this really to the next board of selectmen. You know, we're going to have a goal setting starting in May, so it's not that far away. So I, I'm not sure that a lot of changes could or should be made between now and then.
All right, so I think it's clear we want the research, but.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Identify yourself, please.
I'm Mike Geis. I live on Tuttle Street. About 10 years ago, the town offered us sewers as a solution. And we have this new sewer consideration, you know, and it's gone down like before. And it's almost a mirror image of what was happening before. And so let me sort of give the history of this more recent one. So, you know, the town, we have good people on this committee, but I think it's structurally flawed and doesn't function well because of that. And sort of an example is that for two years, they have a meeting, but for the first three months, sort of the seeds of the problem were set because a group of people came in and showed maps, you know, showed that West Acton had real soil that was ineffective for septic systems. They had a high septic system replacement rate. They had nitrate and phosphate problems, a high water. And so at that point, the committee thought, well, West Acton's a mess. We have no choice but to sewer it. And so the town put a quarter million dollars into study the cost of the sewer. But during that time, some people went and checked the Board of Health, what their records are for septic systems and other things. And they found that indeed, the West Acton problem soil wasn't bad for septic systems. It was consistent over the whole town. West Acton had a lower sewer rate failure than anyplace else in town, half of this town average. The nitrate level for the one monitoring well, the average level was less than the nitrate level for the output of our present sewer. And phosphates, there are no phosphate data. And so, and high water isn't a problem either, as you appreciated at the meeting. So the problem is, the committee doesn't go out and check the information. They let people come and tell them. And almost everybody has some bias. And unless you go out and check the data, you can't get accurate information. I think that's the real problem. And the problem the first time for our neighborhood is that accurate information is not available to the committee. People in the neighborhood went out and got the information and brought it back and showed the committee and it was ineffective in doing so. So I think the committee is structurally flawed and you have to have a broader set of people. You have to have Delving Thomases. You have to show the data before you believe it, as opposed to just listening to people and taking that at their word. So, and also, you know, when you look into the committee as a whole and the town as a whole, we're really ignorant on how to take care of wastewater. We go to people like Woodburn and Kern, for example, to get their opinion, but their opinion's biased. And we really need a broader sense of education for the town as a whole before we start making recommendations for anything. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
I have a simple question, maybe a few statements about this. With every house that's sold with a sewer, a lot, every single time, they're inspected before they're able to be sold or even put on the market, right? A lot of times, they have to be replaced with brand-new ones. How many residents have had a brand-new sewer put in in the past 10 years?
You're asking about septic systems?
Septic systems, correct. Is there a figure on that? Because 10 years old is not that old. Even 25-year-old, 25-years-old sewer systems, septic systems, if they're working, they're probably pretty good if they're that young in age, built 90s. I'm sure they had pretty good technology then. So my question, that's my question. Why would we have a sewer system if most of our homes are, have already a working septic system? And if they don't, have them all inspected and get them new ones?
John?
So generally, why the town has sewers at all, at all? 20 years ago, there was a.
As I'm saying that, I know there was a push in early 2000s to enact and there was probably a vote for it to get sewer systems enacted and that was voted down. And it was actually cheap then, correct? But now we're asking, let's put in a really expensive sewer system and charge monthly fees that people probably can't, and is an additional cost to the homeowner. And why do that if they have working systems or just ones that need to be inspected, replaced and fixed?
I think, and I think Selectman Benson has already offered and I have as well, we'd be happy to sit down with you and work through some of this history with you. And it sounds like you have a lot of great questions and we'd love to talk to you about it.
How are you for breakfast on Wednesday?
Just a minute. Just settle down outside of the meeting, please.
Actually, just to kind of follow up with that, the Board of Health is the entity in town that approves septic systems. And my understanding was the Board of Health voted unanimously in support of the West Acton sewers because they were granting too many variances for people to replace their septic systems. So that was my understanding. But just to follow up with the question of the agenda item, are we going to be looking at the privilege fee next week or is the sense we're going to put that off too? I just want to be clear on that. I don't know.
I thought, you know, the sense of the board was that we would discuss the privilege fee in our capacity as sewer commissioners next week.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Hello, Happy New Year. Nancy Waters, 622 Mass Ave. I want to thank Selectman Martin for his enthusiasm for investigating what other communities are doing in terms of wastewater management financing. I want to thank Selectman Benson for all his comments. I want to support what Mike Geis said. I just wanted to add that in the 2004 Phase 2 Comprehensive Water Resources Management Plan, it did specifically suggest the creation of wastewater management districts. And it, so that all aspects of the wastewater management in Acton, including the 80 to 90% of us who are on septic and the clustered and the packages and all that, would be adequately informed about what was going on, educated and taking care of our systems in the best way possible. Not clear that outreach has taken place. It's not clear what else a wastewater management resource regions could do in terms of checking up on the septic systems, et cetera. So this has been proposed before and I think it's a great idea and I hope you'll look into it. Another aspect of the, another thing that was recommended in the 2004 CWRMP that we discussed also a lot in the process of getting to the vote for the West Acton sewer extension was that the technology is changing all the time. It's changing with regard to sewers, it's changing with regard to septic. And one of the things that the CWMP asks for is continued monitoring of new technologies and opportunities over the course of the 20-year planning period for new solutions. So note that we're coming into the last six years of that period. My advice would be to look, really look into all the new technologies also. What's happening with septic, how much better they're getting. And also what can be done with sewers in terms of better recharge of groundwater, and in terms of more energy-efficient and sustainable sewer waste treatment plants. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're set on that. Oh.
I recommend a brand-new committee.
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Chris Williams, 108 Arlington Street. And I just wanted to second the idea of a wastewater committee that would look at a town-wide solution. I feel like we can't really make a recommendation for a change to the bylaw that would shift the burden from homeowners to regular taxpayers if we don't know what the benefit to the town would be. And that wouldn't be assessed unless we had a town-wide plan. The other thing I wanted to say was about the current committee. I feel like we, it's really hard for me to stomach the idea of having recommendations from this committee for changes to the bylaw because there's so much unfinished business from the sewer vote. Even after the vote at town meeting, there was no discussion of some of the inaccurate information presented by Woodard and Kern. There was no reckoning with the conflict of interest there and no explanation for the grossly inaccurate septic replacement cost estimates that was put forward by the committee. So I would like to strongly encourage the creation of a wastewater committee consisting of people with various viewpoints that would look at town-wide solutions. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine. Update, Three School Street.
Thank you. Earlier, I guess later in 2019, the Board took a vote to declare the property at Three School Street as a surplus property. That's the building that contains the old firehouse that's called now the Civil Defense Building. It's used by the town for storage, most notably the two antique fire trucks, but then a bunch of other stuff. We issued a RFI, which is a request for interest, and generally, we put it on the central register, we put it on the website, wherever else you're supposed to put those things, and asked people who had ideas, what do you want to do with this property? And we presented the results of that process to this board last month, or within the last month or two. And as a result, we were given the direction to move forward with actually putting out a request for proposals for disposition of this building. And that request for proposals was published and is available now. We have had about a dozen entities pull out the RFP. Some of them are just clearinghouses for bids, so I'm not sure that they're actual applicants, but a few of them, I think, are actual applicants. And once we receive the proposals, we'll review the responses and identify whether they meet the goals that the Board has for that parcel. For all that process to take place, we have a placeholder on the annual town meeting warrant right now, which would allow the town to sell that property because town meeting vote is required in addition to the Board taking that action. So, everything's set up, everything's in place for that to happen. And as we get the responses in, we will share them with you later this spring. I just wanted to give you that update, and also just let the public know that the RFP is out there. If you want to buy an old firehouse, you have the opportunity. It's pretty cool. It's right near the train station. And so, that's all for that one. If there's any questions about the process or anything else, I'm happy to see what I can do to answer them.
Okay, great. Community survey related to project with CGI Communications to create videos to highlight Acton?
Yes. So, we've, as I mentioned, I think, at the beginning of the meeting and earlier this year, we've partnered with a group called CGI Communications, and they're going to produce a series of professionally-produced videos to highlight everything Acton has to offer its residents, visitors, and business owners. We're going to be meeting, we put out a survey, we had close to 300 responses. I hope the 30 people that are left here are part of those 300. If not, I highly encourage you to fill out the survey. It only takes a minute. And we're going to gather that information, and then we have a group of staff and a small focus group that we'll be meeting next week to try to formulate what these videos will look like. The cool thing about this project is that we will ultimately get four videos produced, and they solicit advertisements to pay for it, so it doesn't cost us anything. But the cool thing about it is that a fifth video they'll produce for us to highlight community organizations, local nonprofits. So, we'll also be reaching out to a group of those folks as we get further along in the process, and any input that you have, I'd love to hear it. And I guess the purpose of putting this on the agenda tonight is to officially ask the Board what you love about Acton. Or just ask that you take the opportunity to share that with me if you get a chance.
Dean, you're smiling. I will, it's hard to, hard to come up with only four things, I guess, in light of what Acton, but I will communicate with you.
Thanks.
Gentlemen? Do you want to say?
Good, good idea. I enjoyed the survey and take the survey votes.
Just one other item, the small focus group, Joan has offered to participate on behalf of the Board, and that'll be happening in the next week or two. And then, we'll provide updates to the Board this, as the project goes along, and there'll be, you'll start to see a presence about it on the website. So, I want to make sure that you're all aware of what CGI is. It's not, it's a real thing that we're doing. It is a real thing, so, thanks.
Well, when Fred Kennedy and I were on the Board, and he was a native, he said to me, "You will never be a native." But I'm beginning to feel like a native. And I really do enjoy being here. Peter, David? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I have to think about, I mean, there's a dozen things I can think right now, but we'll talk.
Yes?
Quick thing. When and where will it be made available to the public, the advertising promotion? And how much is the price point? Is it small, big, huge? Just curious, because it's probably part of your proposal, but I'm not aware of it.
If you're registered as a business with the community downstairs in the clerk's office, we'll probably be sending this notice to many of you, and it's just letting you know that the opportunity is available. I don't know the price point, but I'm happy to follow up with you if you're interested. There's a few other communities that have done it. If you wanted to take a look at what it might look like, the town of Middleton, which is next to Reading, they did it this past year, and we're going to make, ours are going to be a little bit better than theirs. That's our goal. So, thanks.
Sure will be. Okay. Creation of the Agricultural Commission and review the draft charge.
So, at town meeting last year, the town adopted a bylaw creating a, or enabling the actual state legislation for creating a local agricultural commission. I have before you a draft motion, I mean, a draft charge for what that commission could look like. This is not something that is urgent, but we wanted to get it in front of you, so you had a first look at it. And if there's any input or changes, or if you wanted to continue discussing this, we can keep working on it. Or if you think this looks good, we can move forward and start getting a committee established.
Okay. The Agricultural Commission will promote and develop the agricultural resources of the municipality, educate the public on agricultural issues, advocate for farmers, farm businesses, and farm interests, assist farmers in resolving municipal problems or conflicts related to farms, seek to coordinate agricultural-related activities with other governmental bodies or unofficial local groups or organizations that promote agriculture, prepare a comprehensive local agricultural plan, which shall be, to the extent possible, consistent with existing town master plan and open space and recreation plan. The plan will show or identify agricultural land areas and facilities, matters which may be shown on a tract index under Section 33 of Chapter 184, acquisitions of interest in land under this section, municipal lands that are held as open space, nonmunicipal lands subject to legal requirements or restrictions to protect that land or use it for open space, conservation, recreation, or agriculture, land that should be retained as a public necessity for agricultural use, any other information that the commission determines to be relevant to local agricultural land use. And this commission will consist of five members who shall be town residents. A majority of members shall be farmers or employed in an agricultural-related field. Each member shall serve for a term of three years, provided, however, that the initial members appointed under this section shall serve for terms of one, two, or three years, and the terms shall be arranged by the appointing authority, so that the terms of approximately one-third of the commission's members shall expire each year. And the commission will appoint a clerk and a chair. Discussion?
The charge seems to be pretty much aligned with the statute. I noticed one difference here. It, the statute says the commission can be not less than three, no, more than seven members. The charge has five, which is fine. Both the statute and the charge say a majority of the members shall be farmers or employed in an agricultural-related field. So, that would be three members of a five-member commission, and it would either be farmers or employed in an agriculture-related field. We don't have that many farms in town. The statute says if farmers or persons employed in agriculture are not available to serve on the commission, then the commission shall include a majority of members with knowledge and experience in agricultural practices or knowledge of related agricultural business. I would suggest adding that, just in case we can't find people who are actually farmers or enough people who would volunteer for this commission who are actually farmers or employed in an agriculture-related field. So, or, or people with, a majority of members with knowledge and experience in agricultural practices or knowledge of related agricultural business. So, anyway.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll add that.
Do you, yeah, we certainly could add that sentence, or that, add to that sentence to broaden it a little bit. Is there any other changes?
Mike on?
Yes. Okay, Deborah Simms, Concord Road. Couple things. So, full disclosure, I was involved with the farmers' market for 11 years, and I was on the task force that pulled this whole right-to-farm and ag commission thing together. So, people should know that. And I appreciate, Peter, what you just said, because I think that's a great addition to the composition, composition section, sorry. I also want to say that I really appreciate the fact that the bullet item that's in there that says land that should be retained as a public necessity for agricultural use got preserved. That's a great, a great aspect. Quick question in bullet number five, is it? Yeah, okay. It says, "Seek to coordinate agriculture-related activities with other governmental bodies or unofficial local groups or organizations that promote agriculture." And I'm just wondering why the word unofficial is in there. I don't really know what that means.
Non-town?
I think it's just saying it's not a town-sponsored group. That's my guess, but if it's not clear, we certainly look at the language.
I mean, honestly, I feel like you could just jettison it, and it would be fine.
That's directly from the statute, too. I'm not sure. I don't really know what it means, but it's got the word unofficial in the statute.
That's so funny, it's so unclear. Okay. Well, if it's in the statute, whatever. And the other question I have is this. I have in front of me one of the early drafts that the task force group had pulled together that made provision for, as you guys can do, to add in addition to the five regular members, an associate member or two if you want to. And I would encourage you to consider adding at least one. I think the associate thing is a great kind of training, training experience for folks, so that people who might not feel meet to the task right away might, you know, kind of get in the saddle for a little bit. So, I, you know, I don't think it's a huge deal, but I would encourage you to consider that. Thank you.
David? Yeah, I definitely agree with the associate member. In fact, I was thinking here myself about the, you know, the composition of the committee. And, you know, when you, it says five members, but you never, not never, but you frequently don't have five. I mean, one person resigns, moves out of town, whatever, and you're with four. So, I think if we had an associate member, we should do, that allows someone to, you know, fill that slot right away if someone resigns. And also, we could put in there that that person can be a voting member if they don't have a quorum, which I think is a very convenient thing to have. Tara?
I support everything I've heard so far, but I have a comment, a couple of comments. Promote and develop the agricultural resources. In the dictionary, it says develop means make better, but there's also a definition where you build buildings on top of it. So, I'm worried about that, promote and develop. I love the public necessity idea, and the land shall be retained as, and I urge whoever is involved to look up the metrics relative to having enough land per person to be able to be food-independent. There are actual organizations out there, I think the Trust for Public Lands has some metrics there, and we're losing, you know? And that leads me to my next comment, that I hope that this group will also look at methods to retain land at a rate that we're able to achieve agricultural sustainability in terms of food dependence. In particular, I'll make a plug for the land bank idea that is enabled by state law, where 2% of all new buildings would, excuse me, of all sales of buildings, with some exceptions, would go into a land bank for such purposes. I urge that the members not be just people who know about business, you know, lobbyists for industry, but active gardeners, people that have their hands in the soil. And so, I guess that's it. Thank you.
I also favor adding one associate position. I think that's a good concept.
We don't need a motion on that, do we?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the Acton Agricultural Commission charge as mended, which would include...
Second.
With an associate member?
With the, okay.
And the language that Peter had earlier, yes. Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. And Big Bird. Dean?
All right. One of the more fun things to do as a selectman, I wanted to advise the Board that there is an ad hoc grassroots group that has sprung up regarding Big Bird and proper memorial to Carol Spinney, an Acton native. The committee at this point includes Mike Majors, Karen Herther, Annette Lockery, Jennifer Friedman, and myself as liaison to the Board of Selectmen. We had one kickoff meeting at the West Acton Citizens Library last week. We're kind of moving ahead with some ideas. Last week, I spoke with the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee about the whole project because a lot of the ideas we've got stirring around involve things that we could incorporate into the reconstruction of Kelly's Corner. As some of you may know, Carol Spinney actually tended the old Acton High School, which is now a housing property at the corner of Charter Road and Mass Ave. So, certainly, as things develop, I'll be bringing them back to the Board. There's a couple of fun little things that are going to be going on right very soon. There was actually a documentary about Carol Spinney called "I Am Big Bird," and that is going to be screened in March at the Memorial Library and at the Senior Center. So, check the websites for those two operations to get the exact times, but it's moving ahead.
Good.
I think that's great. At some point, this group might want to hold a public forum and get input from wider groups of citizens, or particularly schools, school kids, and whatever, so.
Good, good point. There's actually been quite a bit of outreach, and a lot of it has sort of originated at the West Acton Citizens Library, which is really a great resource. And they have reached out to various town groups already, especially trying to find any documents or memorabilia that might exist about Carol Spinney. And we've actually assembled some photographs. Carol did a, a book signing event at Willow Books some years ago, so we've got a lot of the photography from that, so it's, it's coming right along, and it's moving at a meteoric pace. Great.
Jim?
Dean, if people have further ideas, what's the best way for them to get those ideas to your working group?
Well, at this point, they could reach out to me, my selectman's address, and I'll forward them along. I just, I don't have the other email addresses available. Also, as I mentioned, Jen Friedman at the West Acton Citizens Library is sort of the clearinghouse for a lot of this as well, so certainly reach out to me or to the West Acton Citizens Library.
Finally, discussion of citizen petition process.
Thank you. At the last board meeting, the board voted to have me work on a process. We, we got further along with it than I thought we would by tonight. My printer, I just, was only to get three off the printer, so I can just distribute it after the meeting, but I can walk you through where we are. And since citizen petitions and town meeting, it's really not part of common knowledge for people. I mean, unless you're in the business, you, you learn about it as you go. So, part of what we look to do in addition to talking about the specific issue of legal review that was being requested by us is to provide some more general information of what a citizen petition is and, and what it, what it isn't, so to speak. So, we have information about what an article should contain, legitimate article matters that should be considered before bringing it for town meeting, things that, you know, adopting, repealing bylaws, amending the charter, authorizing the filing of home rule petition, making non-binding resolutions, authorizing acquisition of interests of land, making and amending budgetary appropriations. Those are just a list of things that you could create an article about. It also explains what a motion is, because a lot of people struggle to understand what, what they're, what's on their citizen petition and how it relates to what a motion is supposed to look like before a town meeting, so we've tried to lay that out as well. We've also talked about a process for drafting. A few key things that I would, I wanted to just present is that it says, "Citizens who want to bring a petition before town meeting are encouraged to speak with the town manager or other town board, committee, or commission that might have oversight on the matter in advance of special town meeting or town meeting. Although citizens are not required to have these discussions, it's strongly recommended to confirm at least whether the town is not planning similar action and to ensure that everyone is on the same page moving through the process." It also talks about drafting a petition. Though not required, having early discussion with town staff or board, boards allows the citizens' suggestions on policy matter to be given careful consideration. If after such consultation, those proposing action decide to sponsor a warrant article, the next step is drafting that article. And then it gives some standard language to use in articles, like to see if the town will, and it tells you you should end everything with, or take any action related thereto, sort of just 101 for drafting an article. Then it says they can seek guidance by looking at previous warrants posted on the website. Town council reviews the warrant for consistency with master laws, the charter, and the bylaw. If requested by the Board of Selectmen, town council may also review a draft article for legal form. And then on the specific issue of legal review, petitioners should ensure that action, that the action the article proposes conforms to state law and bylaws and is within the purview of town meeting. An article should be phased, phrased to accurately accomplish its intended purpose. Although town council may be asked by town officials to review submitted petition articles and opine to, as to their legal effect, if directed to do so by the Board of Selectmen, it is the petitioner's responsibility to make sure the wording is proper form, in proper form. It also says the legal review should occur before the petition is offered for signatures. Once the petition is offered by, even, once a petition is signed by even one registered voter, the language of the article may not be changed before appearing on the warrant. Another thing that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, to make sure you agree with it, agree with it, is that it says, "Petitioner may want to consider presenting a concept for a citizen petition to the Board of Selectmen or other committees prior to obtaining signatures to solicit, to solicit feedback and support for the subject matter being proposed." And there are a few more sections, but I think that's plenty.
That's really good. If you could just circulate that, you know, to the, to the board, and if we could review it over the next week and just finalize it up at our meeting next Monday night, but, but that's, that's what we wanted. Thank you very much.
Okay. Consent items. 14, approve meeting minutes, January 6th and 16, 2020. 15, approve executive session minutes, January 6th, 2020. Could we just hold that? 15?
Yeah.
Okay. 16, approve committee appointment, Ron Parenti, associate member to full member of Water Resources Advisory Committee. 17, approve a one-day alcoholic beverage license, Neshoma Valley Neighbors Club, Nagark Woods Clubhouse, April 18th, 2020. 18, approve a one-day alcoholic beverage license, True West Brewing Company Powder Mill Animal Hospital, February 7th, 2020. 19, approve a one-day alcoholic beverage license, Acton Community Theater, Theater 3, February 14th, 2020. 20, accept gift counsel on aging for $150 from John and Ruth Richards for building furnishings. 21, accept gift counsel on aging for $100 from Ann Anderson for building furnishing. 22, accept gift counsel on aging for $25 from Ken Klein for building furnishing. 23, accept gift recreation department for $1,000 for the Acton Barksborough Cultural Council to help cover costs of the Kids Music Fest, July 18th, 2020. 24, accept gift recreation department for $1,500 for Loyal Companions to support the 2020 Summer Concert Series. 25, accept gift recreation department for $500 from Prestigious Tree and Landscaping to support the 2020 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. 26, accept gift recreation department for $1,500 from Seacrest and Bloom LLC to support the 2020 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. 27, accept gift planning division for $9,000 from Luster Charing Cross RT as required in the Board of Appeals Decision Number 13-06, Condition Number 4.23. Hold on 28. 29, request to dispose of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Is there a motion? Holding 15 and 28.
Move to approve consent items, 14, 16 through 27 and 29.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hold on executive session minutes.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see them in the package. I see meeting minutes. I don't see the executive session.
Yeah, they were put in, at some point today. You have to go into the confidential...
We, we can delay and bring them next week.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to submit some edits to Lisa.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'm in my packet, I don't have a copy. I've got extra information.
You got to log in.
I can make sure you get a copy tomorrow. We can, we can move that or delay that till the third.
And who held on McPherson Field for mosquito spraying? Jim?
Thanks. I was initially alarmed because it was the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project. I do understand from reading through the material that they're not intending to use any insecticides, they're not intending to use any herbicides during this work, which is really just clearing, clearing the vegetation away from a ditch, but it seemed appropriate for you when you fill out the permission slip that they've carefully provided you, to in the remarks section, make that explicit, that they, they won't be using insecticides and herbicides during the course of the work. The other related with that, so that's a comment, but I would recommend that you do that. And the question I had for John or anyone is if, is if this work has been looked at by, by Tom Tidman, in case there's a Conservation Commission comment or review that's necessary.
Pam Chair, I can, I can address that. Couple items. One is the, I've had similar work done in my yard as well. Basically, it's opening up old agricultural drainage ditches, and this sort of work is outside the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission by state law. The other point, perhaps the town manager might be able to clarify this, I'm not sure that this property is now within jurisdiction of the town of Acton. This is land that's proximate to Conant School, and I'm not sure if the interest in this land might have been transferred to the regional school district with the full regionalization a couple of years ago.
So, the first part of the question's a little easier to answer. I did share this with health staff and natural resources staff, and they didn't have any concerns. The ownership question I'm not as up to speed on.
You know, I, I wouldn't have any problem with voting in favor of this, but, you know, maybe out of courtesy, we should let the schools know what's coming their way.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve this with a note saying that, as our understanding, that no herbicides or pesticides are being used in the comment session, and provided that the town manager finds that we do indeed own this land.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second that, and I'll note that probably it should be signed by either the town manager or the school superintendent, whichever is the most appropriate.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business to bring before the meeting?
Move to adjourn?
Actually, before we do that, do we want to authorize the chair, if in her judgment, to, to sign a note to the Sudbury Board of Selectmen?
Oh, right.
I mean, that, I, I know it's not on our agenda, but considering it's time constrained, it's probably allowed, and it was brought up during citizens' concerns, even though the person there is not a citizen, or not a resident, anyway. I, I, you know, I just, you know, I don't, it's, it's difficult here, because we didn't, weren't able to read it. I was just wondering if we wanted to ask Joan to make a judgment and to sign it if she's so inclined.
Joan?
I think that sort of discretion could be exercised without the board taking action tonight.
That's fine, too.
I think there's consensus to, to, to support the West, Westford Select Board members' request to send a letter on to Sudbury, and I would suggest we authorize Joan to do that.
Yeah, and when John says we don't even need a vote to do that, so...
Tara?
As sort of a citizen watchdog, I don't think that this is controversial, and I urge you to do it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Meeting to adjourn?
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say?